With that, I call this October 27th School Board Reading to order. We've got four board members present in the administration room, and Maggie Ty Tucker is on video. And with that, do I have a motion to establish the agenda?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? With that?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Five oh, six oh, okay. And with the agenda being established, I'll turn it over to Fred for our recognition.
We're gonna wait for recognition until six, and then I think you wanted to wait on the public comment. We don't have any yet, but if should we get some, we can. So I'd like to invite the middle school up to the table. We're gonna go into our partial governance with the instructional program with the IMS School Improvement Plan. Typically, you would see the high school and the middle school on the same evening. The high school with some of their changes in transitions with leadership, asked if they could have until the November meeting, and we appreciate that combination. So we just have one tonight with the middle school, who's been on a journey of, as they change and improve their school. And so I know that this is a continuation. I've worked with them on this and have been really pleased with the conversations we've had. So I'll turn it over, I think, to you, Aaron, first, and then you'll go from there.
Yeah, so today I'm gonna be presenting first our reflection and then going to our SIP for 2223. Before we get into that, just wanted to be transparent and say our brains are in lots of different places right now. We've been dealing over the last couple of days with some unfortunate antisemitic comments by some of our IMS students, which has, it's caused us to realize that we've gone a long way with supporting our kids in that area about antisemitic and other forms of hate speech, but we still have a long way to go. And so we've been working over the last 36 to 48 hours, talking with students and families, community members, about the different prongs of the issues that we're dealing with. And we appreciate our partnerships that we have with many of our community members to help educate us, but also work through some of these challenging problems. So you're gonna get the best we have tonight that we're able to bring you, but just know that we have lots of things going on. Yeah, so that's kind of where we are. So in our reflection, and I'm sure you've seen it already, really, we started our second year of our journey around grading for equity. And last year, we really focused on mindset one and two. And mindset one was really separating that behavior, or behaviors, academic and behavior, out of a student's grades. So grades are really reflecting what kids know and are able to do and eliminate some of those other things that taint grades, but don't necessarily show what a kid might know in math or science or things like that. And we also really worked hard on our teachers working together to develop the essential standards for each course. For example, in eighth grade science, what are the eight to 12 things that every kid must know as they leave that course or progress through the course? And so that's led to more than ever, our classes are similar. So if you have an eighth grade science teacher, no matter which teacher you have, you're gonna have a similar experience. So and also with identifying what those essential standards are, we also really focused on what does it mean to be proficient in those? What does it mean to be a little below proficient? And what does it mean to be beyond proficient? So distinguished, what does it mean to show that you know higher level thinking? So the proficient is, do you know the content and can you apply it? And the distinguished or the level four is, how can you even go further and use some of those higher level thinking skills? The depth of knowledge skills, the application, the synthesis? And so that's really what we worked on last year. Different content areas, depending on their level, where they started our journey last year, got to different places. But we're really proud of our staff and all the work they did on that alignment piece. As we progressed through the year, we did get to some mindset three and four. So mindset three, talking about multiple ways for kids to engage in the content. Some of that UDL stuff I know you're familiar with. And also mindset four, about how do we assess what kids and no one are able to do? And then how do we, if they don't know, if they haven't demonstrated that, what are different opportunities for them to do that? And also, if they have already demonstrated it, what are ways that they can advance and grow? So we did get into some of that as well, depending on different departments got to different levels of that. You'll hear that it's continued work that we're working on this year. But once again, we're really proud of our staff because kids and staff are now having conversations about not just how many points do I need to get to get to an A? How many assignments do I need to complete? Do I, how to, what behaviors do I need to demonstrate in classes? So that getting rid of that completion and compliance way of education to more of a thinking, learning, growth, and achievement, those frameworks instead. We really focused last year on, if we talk about the four Bs that I know Fred you've introduced to this group, we really talked about belief, that all of our staff are believing that kids can meet standards, that they can move along the progression. And also the barriers, we're eliminating barriers at our school, not only for kids who need academic support, but also for kids who need academic stretch, whether that's through different content, whether that's through different experiences to get them to the higher level of thinking. So we really focused on those two Bs. We also worked on inclusionary practices, continuing inclusionary practices. How do we get kids, all kids, exposure to grade level classes? That could be in classes co-taught with two teachers, a special education, a general education teacher. We also threw push-in models of having support come in. We're really trying to eliminate students receiving their core content in classes outside of their peers. So we're trying to remove that and focus on more inclusionary practices. Once again, you'll see tonight that does another, we'll still continue to work on that goal this year, but inclusionary practices is something. And finally, you'll hear from us and our SIPs this year, really trying to increase student voice. One of the things we really have heard from our peers at the high school over the last several years is how much they include student voice. And we're really proud of what they're doing. We want to include that more here. So you hear from Weston about that in a little bit. And also developing data points. How do we know what we're doing is successful? How do we know based on other data points we may have? How can we compare past to present? How can we compare grading, what we're, how we're grading now to how we're grading in the past, to SBAQ scores? So we'll be talking more about some data points tonight. So we're really proud of our work on our staff this year. We know we, or this last year, we know we have lots of areas to grow, but we think we've progressed in the right direction in terms of G4E and our inclusionary practices. So we're gonna start off with, I believe, Weston, who's gonna talk about the most important goal in our SIP this year about student voice and how to, how we can improve that this year.
Yeah, we chose this year to write a student goal in addition to a staff goal because we recognize that students are our most important constituency, as Aaron was saying, and students are why we do what we do. And so their voice is so valuable. And we, over the years, have had lots of informal ways of gathering student voice and hearing students reflect on the school-wide initiatives. We have EES data that tells us how, you know, how students feel. And we have the Esper, which you've heard me talk lots about, about social-emotional learning. But what we want to do is formalize. And I also want to give a shout out to Mary Jo, who has been meeting regularly with students about their experience in G4E. I know she has ongoing appointments to hear feedback from students directly. But we want to formalize that process. And so our goal this year is to formalize in two ways. One is a quantitative measure, so we would like to work with Cabinet. We really primarily want Cabinet to take leadership in the development and implementation of a student voice survey around our school-wide initiatives, which Aaron referenced through his reflection. All the things that we're working on, we want to gather growth data points and hear from students. And it's really important that we're able to measure all of our student voice through that. And so the Cabinet will play a big role. And then for qualitative data, we want to bring together really a building advisory council of students. We have so many students who are excited each year to sign up to be on the superintendent's student advisory council. And so we know that there are lots of students who have things to say. What we really want to be mindful of as we build our student advisory council is that it reflects the diversity of our school. And that's all kinds of diversity, whether that's racial diversity, that could be gender expression and identity, neurodiversity. We just want to make sure that it reflects all of our students. Language development, so that's really important to us. And so we're gonna partner with not only our teachers, but also our school-wide organizations. So because our clubs and activities are where students are expressing their interests and coming together as constituency groups. And so partnering with them to create our student advisory, I think, is gonna be incredibly important. And so we've outlined our goals for how often we would like that group to meet and what kinds of things that we would like to hear from them on as far as our school-wide initiatives. We really feel that that aligns with the values, vision, and mission of the district and referencing the Bs, that broadcasting of student voice. And it also will help us to identify what are the barriers that students are seeing. So there are several connections to the Bs that Dr. Rundel has introduced, and then also to the fundamentals. And we highlight three, four, and five. But we really feel like teaching students how to have a voice in their community and in their school system helps to build citizenship. It helps to build belonging in the school community. So we're very excited to formalize the process of collecting student voice and student data to help us see how we're doing with our most important group.
All right, so then I'm up. It's funny, as I see Andrew scrolling back and forth, Aaron was not pleased with the way we organized the student and staff voice. And it's looking like, or the student staff was looking like. That's also troublesome. But Weston and I felt very confident and comfortable with how that organizational style can also thank you all for bearing with us. So our staff goal looks very similar to what it did last year. And while this is your, gosh, maybe even your four in our work towards this concept of grading for equity, really... Hey, come take a look at this. Yes, take a look at this. Really, we are, this is year zero. This is the first year where 100% of our staff is utilizing this practice. Sorry, there's a lot going on there. Utilizing this practice and implementing it with as much fidelity as we can and then reporting in the same manner, using a standards-based gradebook through Skyward. So it is really the first time everybody is growing in the same direction. So it really does feel like year zero to us. And ultimately, our goal is that idea of upholding the humanity and dignity of all of our students and working to build a community of inclusion where we seek equitable learning experiences for every one of our students. That is what our big stretch goal is. And then this year, we're really looking, based off of what Weston was saying, is that all students are taking more of an active role in their learning process, in understanding what success looks like, in sharing and reflecting on what's going on for them. So that really is kind of the big piece that we're looking to try and do. And then because that's our big goal, we have several focus points. Aaron really talked about mindset two. And while that was our huge emphasis last year, as we are learning the standards-based report card in Skyward, we are still trying to think about how do our essentials show there? How are parents able to see it? How are kids able to see it? How are we communicating? That's a huge focus and emphasis area for us. We are really prioritizing communication. We hope that our families are seeing that priority. We communicate weekly. We are shifting the way we do our pack, trying to help educate and bring our parent voice in. Our teachers are communicating regularly, trying to help families and students understand the work that we're doing. And then ultimately, we really are asking our staff to lean into mindsets three and four. That idea of multiple means of engagement into the content and multiple means of demonstrating what you know and reassessment. And then beyond our borders, we are trying to stretch ourselves to understand better the transition from fifth to sixth and the transition from eight to nine. So you'll see in our results section, in particular, a focus on our current sixth graders and aligning the SBAQ standards with the standards that we are assessing and really looking at, is our proficiency aligning with what they are getting in SBAQ? Are we getting a year's growth in a year? Or are there areas that we need to dig into? Are we maybe looking at some of the wrong standards? So you'll see more of that in the results section. And then really working with ninth grade to understand how are our kids showing up as ninth graders? What are the success points? How is this translating? How are grades looking at the high school? So really thinking about those things. We have a grading for equity leadership team. We meet every week. And it is really dynamic and exciting work because we can talk about learning in a way that we never could before because every teacher is working in the same way and sharing learning with kids similarly. So that is a major group, a leadership group that is taking lead. The second is our principal's cabinet. And Weston referenced the cabinet and the role that they will play in the student goal. But they are major leaders in this work. We meet in PLCs twice weekly, and they lead all of the conversation and all of the work. And we are really, this year, emphasizing the idea of student, what happens when students don't learn and what happens when they already have? So that stretch, that how do we bring more learning to kids when they are ready? And how do we reteach kids when they haven't learned? So that those are our leadership pieces. And then alignment, I mean, I feel like these guys have already said it, but everything G4E is everything whole child. I read your vision, mission, and values. I read your priorities. I look at the fundamentals. I mean, fundamental one, personalization. Fundamental two, maintaining high standards. Fundamental five, foster embrace diversity. I mean, everything we are doing is, I think, living the tenants of what you have established for us, the four Bs. It just, it so lives into every student belonging, feeling capable, feeling connected, the belief in the limitless potential of our kids, breaking down the barriers that have existed to students being able to show what they know or reaching whatever outcome they want. So we just feel like it is so clearly aligned. And then finally, results. And I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron to talk a little bit about where we're going.
Yeah, so Mary Jo, you've talked about some of them just a minute ago. But I think one of the things is we've come to you for the past several years and listening to your feedback around G4E is, how do you know it's working? What are the data points? We've heard you ask, what are the data points that show that this is an effective journey that we're taking our kids on and changing our grading system? So some of our results highlight some data points about inclusive practices. We want to look at data points around kids that we're breaking down barriers on our kid, more kids accessing higher level classes of appropriate stretch for them. So are more kids maybe taking an additional higher level math class? Or have we reduced some barriers around single subject kids and highly capable? So things like that, really trying to reduce barriers. Also, serving more kids in general education settings via inclusionary practices. That's another way we're gonna continue to break down barriers. So we want to look at the data from that. And we know, based on our broadening of inclusionary practices, those numbers are gonna increase, which we're really happy about. Also, as Mary Jo mentioned, we really want to look at our fifth grade, the sixth graders, last year's fifth graders, and look at the SBAQ scores, use that data point. Are they showing growth? Are they showing one year of growth? There's something called student growth percentiles that demonstrate whether they're having year's growth in a year's time. Are the teaching and learning practices and grading practices that we have in our classrooms, are they showing appropriate student growth from kids on SBAQ between grades five and six? So that's a cohort. We'll keep tracking that cohort as they keep going up with COVID and things like that. We felt like that was the logical cohort to track our new sixth graders. Also, looking at high school, as Mary Jo mentioned, how do our eighth graders, as they transition to the high school, what is their experience? What do their grades look like? Are they prepared, both in terms of academics, both in terms of habits, both in terms, or in terms of social-emotional? So what is that transition? So we're gonna be looking at those data points because that's something that we think, we want to make sure that we, that we feel like, we know we feel like this is the right thing, but does data show that it is the right thing? Because we know that's important to you, but it's also important to us. I think the last thing I would point out is, I think, really looking at the SBAQ data compared to our classroom grades is an interesting thing for us to look at. So if students are receiving threes in our classes, but receiving fours on the SBAQ, or twos versus threes, and so on, that would be good data to say, well, are our standards that we're assessing in classes, are they the right standards? Because if kids, if there's a discrepancy between what they're getting on the statewide tests and what they're getting in our classrooms, maybe we're not aligned there. And if we, and so it causes to look a little bit and to take a deeper dive into, are we teaching the right things through the right mechanisms with the right assessment? So those are some data points we're really going to be focusing on this year. And in closing, I think, unless you guys have anything else, I was in a, walking by a classroom this morning before school, and there was, in Senior Ojeda's classroom, some of your students might have had Senior Ojeda. Did you have Senior Ojeda?
I did.
Yeah, so there was, he was offering kind of a retake opportunity before school this morning, so kind of that multiple means of assessment. And there were four kids in the class. And he and I were talking to them about, well, why are you in here right now? And one of the students, on their original assessment, got a two, so below, approaching standard. And they were in there to try, and they were very clear. I'm in here because I have a two, and I want to get to standard. And another student was at a 2.5, and they wanted to get to a three. But there were also kids in there who were at standard, who wanted to show through additional evidence of Senior Ojeda that they were beyond standard. And so that kind of incorporates that we're talking, we're all talking this same language. It's not, I want to move an 83% to an 85. It's, I want to show more documentation of my learning to my teacher through this additional opportunity. So it kind of encapsulates what we're excited about. And the conversations have been great among staff, among students. We really feel like we're going in the right direction. But we understand the need for data to support that. So we're gonna be really focusing on that this year. So anything else to add?
No, thank you.
Good, so there, we will take questions.
Thank you very much, most appreciated. Are there any questions from directors?
So I really like the direction with data and sort of, you know, apart from the pedagogy and the theory, right? To know that it's working in actuality. In particular, you know, some of the things you mentioned, seeing students that are taking stretch courses and trying to quantify that because grading for equity gives the opportunity to show that you've mastered the material at a later point in date. And it's, you know, an early sort of misstep early in the class isn't penalized. So I look forward to that. Also, growth data is something I'd like to see across the board, you know, at both the elementary, middle, and the high school level. And hopefully, that will be rich. So both, you know, with cohorts within, you know, those struggling students, those in sort of the middle and those that are more advanced and sort of seeing, you know, are we providing an appropriate education to each of those blocks of students? The one thing, sort of in addition, as we're talking about these transition points, would be, at least in my interest, would be, when it comes to executive functioning skills and time management, you know, are students prepared when they get to high school? If there isn't sort of the same homework expectations, I mean, certainly it's going to be different in middle school and in high school. And to just make sure that we're being thoughtful because high schoolers may say they're stressed because they have too much on their plate. But that could be a reflection of perhaps not being prepared enough at an earlier point, you know, in date. But if you ask middle schoolers, you know, they'll say like, no, we're fine, right? So it's one of the things like, you know, by the time, in order for it to be meaningful, sometimes you need to go beyond like the period to know if it's being adequately prepared. But truly appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. And just to follow up on one of your comments, I think it is important that we are looking at all cohorts to make sure that every student has the opportunity to grow one year in one year's time, at least, and to keep that rigor for all of our groups because we want to make sure that in doing all of this, the rigor for all kids stays at the highest possible. So I do agree, looking at, and not just our school as a whole, but also picking out some specific groups, I think, is very important. So thank you for that feedback.
I have, you know, some of the things that you've been saying really resonate with me. Like, I love hearing that there are standards across all, like the science classes. And, you know, in a lot of professional programs, there's accreditation that does core competencies, right? And so wherever you go, you know that you have a standard of education. And so that's what I'm hearing you all are doing to really... And I don't know how people, if people realize the amount, intense amount of work to really map out implicitly and explicitly what you all are doing. So the system change work is really impressive. So I thank you for taking on this work. But beyond that, I think the cultural change work that you're all trying to do is sometimes might be more difficult, right? Because when I write accreditation, I can write everything on paper. It's really, then how do you implement it? Get people on board. So thank you for your leadership on that. And so it takes time, you know? We have the system down, but now to implement it will, you know, will take time. So seeing that you're making progress on that is really great. And part of that, I feel like it's parallel, then, you know, I like hearing that you're formalizing the relationship, you know, including students' voice. And I want to pull in what Dan said like many, many meetings ago. When we're pulling people's voice, how do we start from the beginning to have them inform us, instead of like we're coming with an idea and then having, what do you think, right? But really to have, inform us, in what direction should we go? And so I, just as we're pulling people's voice, I like to start from... And I think you have it here, where you're developing, right? Based on what people are saying. And I really love the partnership with the community that is being done. And one of the blessings, I think, of Mercer Island School District, the fact that we're so small and, you know, and all the administrators know each other, get along so well. And but seeing that you intentionally are focusing on transitional years, that is really what will set us apart from other schools who are just as probably amazing with their teachers and things like that, but then not having that intentional system kind of connection that you all are able to do and want to do. I think it's gonna be very powerful to make sure that none of our students fall through the cracks, right? And so what, like I said, that's really the, one of the benefits of being a small school district is being able to... And of all the research I read about what makes one of, you know, there's a book called The Smartest Kids in the World, right? And there's three types of countries. One country is like you just study like day and night, right? South Korea. There's another country where it is Finland. They also score high on the PSAT test, and they do a lot of just outdoors kind of, you know? But there's another country, I think it's Poland, that they do exceptionally well. And they're like, this is kind of weird. But what it is, is that they found it was that whatever change they made, because it's a kind of a dictatorship, it was like the whole system changed. One of the problems that in America, because we make incremental changes by state, so as a whole, it doesn't come out to be system transformation work. But the fact that if you're able to change K to, you know, the elementary, the middle school, and the high school as a whole, the transformational power is very, is great. So I think that's really our strength. And I see that you all are seeing that. And you don't have to do it, but then you are wanting to do it. So I appreciate that, so thank you.
Well, Tam, I truly appreciate you calling out the amount of work that it has taken our teachers to do that alignment with our standards and development of competency skills. They have put in huge amounts of time. And I truly appreciate you honoring that and holding that up.
I have a question, which is, I'm just wondering, like, as this is your, you know, your year zero, right? The first year that you're really like, everybody's fully on board. This is rolled out all the way across the school. Whether teachers use samples of like the different levels of work to be like, this is a four, this is a three? Or whether that's not appropriate because that's maybe not like a four for that individual kid or a three for that individual kid? You know what I'm saying? Like, I'm, now, and I really rely on the sample papers that sometimes professors share with us. But I'm realizing, like, if it's really individualized, I'm not sure that would necessarily be appropriate.
Well, we definitely use a lot of models. We use models of strong and models of weak work. And teachers are gathering that too as we go. But definitely, our teachers are, we're really pushing them to have kids practice thinking at level four, even if we're not living at level four, to have ideas and examples of what level four thinking looks like so that they can live into that concept. So we definitely utilize models, some places more than others.
Yeah, I would just also add to that, that in UDL, there isn't necessarily one or even two or three... There is one, two or three ways to solve a problem or to get to, to show evidence towards work. So it's gonna take a little bit longer, and kids are gonna provide that best evidence for us. So I think it's something we'll be collecting. But if there's different ways to get to it, sometimes a model might actually put a box around it for... actually put a box around it for kids. So I think we also want to allow sometimes kids to expand further beyond the box and not just say, here's what a three looks like. Just go for this, because there's so much more to do. So it's definitely something we're working on.
But just, sorry, I, I, I keep talking too much. But just along that line, I was meeting in a goals conference with a teacher today and he was, he was talking about how he was, he had the standard broken down on the board and they were talking about what we're doing right now. That's level two. Here's how it's meeting the standard. Here's the proficiency. And we need this baseline in order to build to level three. And so, you know, that is another way that our teachers are, are doing it is really being very visual and very clear about what the work is that we are currently doing and where it sits on proficiency. So the kids understand why we need to build that as we are moving towards beyond mastery.
Thank you.
I have a question I'm going to get to at the end. But first, I know it's been a challenging week. And I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for all the work you're doing. I think that, you know, the quick response is, is, is great. I think that, I mean, it's important. The, when, when I read comments and hear things, what I get frustrated is with is the, the fact that our students are overchanging. They're growing. So there are students that, that went through this last year, were in a different grade and a different maturity level than they are now. And they're learning new lessons and they're growing. And then hopefully not repeating things and then be able to educate peers and, and those coming up. You know, middle school is such a, such a time for pushing boundaries, finding independence, learning things through social media and other places where these, and I use quotes, these less than stellar role models are modeling things for our kids that we don't necessarily want them to be modeled. And so often our schools get blamed when these things are coming into our schools and they're not a product of what's being taught in our schools. Obviously, I, I think we all agree that it is, you know, part of our, our school community's responsibility to educate and make sure that everyone feels comfortable and that it's a learning environment. But I hope that we can all move away from the, you know, what's being done to these kids, rather than how are we educating them and guiding them towards the type of community we all want to be a part of. So I think that you guys do that. I just want to, I think, remind our adults that, you know, the middle schoolers of, of right now are not the middle schoolers of three years ago. And just throw them three years ago out from anywhere. But I mean, but, but just remember that it's, you know, education is a continuum. And even though we might have the same adults in place, it's new kids and new ideas, and they're getting them from different places. So just grace and compassion and not excusing any behavior, which, which I don't think happens at all. But we want our kids to be treated in our school community, like through education. You know, punishing and blaming and, and shaming isn't probably very effective. But educating and helping the understanding, I know there's a lot of instruction in the middle school curriculum about the Holocaust and other types of atrocities. And unfortunately, they tend to kind of be much more emphasized in our history classes than, than, you know, I think over time historically, we should be looking at more positive things, I think, in a lot of ways. But anyways, so thank you. I, I, I mean, I fully support, I was actually not thrilled, but if it was going to happen in any classroom, I happen to be a big fan of Ms. Mottar and, and very comforted to know that she has the integrity and the compassion and the rapport with our students to help guide them through that. And, you know, to just, so just thank you and hang in there and, and, we, we know, well, I know that you guys have this. So with regard specifically to this, my question, what I, what I think I'm hearing the most, first of all, everything they said, I agree. What I think I hear the most in terms of still the concerns is what about, some of us have unmotivated learners, you know, that can really just skate along. So, so how, I know you have strategies to address that. Can you talk a little bit about that?
We're spending a lot of time in student self-reflection and students taking a look at their practice opportunities and how, how many practice opportunities did they take? And what was their score on their assessment? And, and then having them check themselves against that and say, you know, I chose to only do one of four practice opportunities and I, I didn't demonstrate mastery on this essential standard. And, and so part of that is my lack of preparation. So then we have, we want them to set goals and try again the next time. We are communicating home with parents about where to see that data, how to see that data, and really asking kids to examine. And then the other flip side of that is I didn't take any practice opportunities and I got four on this assessment. So then what as teachers are we doing to shift the kinds of opportunities that we are giving that child in particular, but all children, so that we can better challenge them? And or I did all my practice, I'm doing really well, and I feel like I'm on the right trajectory. So really trying to measure all three of those things and include students in that process and have students be the ones who are communicating home. How is that going for me? And what do I need to do differently? And how can I utilize my time at home better to prepare myself for what is going on at school? So that's really.
Yeah, I would also just say that I think no matter what the grading system is, there's going to be unmotivated. And so even when it was A through F, there's unmotivated learners. So how can we have conversations about you did or didn't do this assignment to, you can or cannot show the proof of this learning? Because we all know those unmotivated learners that, as Mary Jo mentioned, don't do any of the practice, but then nail the assessment or vice versa. Do all the practice and do poorly on the assessments? And so how can we have those other ways to show evidence of learning? So individual self-reflection, individual teacher and kid conversation. We had one of our instructional coaches go into a classroom and cover a teacher's class so the teacher can sit in the hallway and call out into the hallway to have individual conversations with kids to get more evidence. So it's just changing the conversation from, although we, we 100% understand that assignment completion is an important skill and meeting deadlines is an important skill, we also want the learning and the demonstration of learning, whatever way it comes to us, to be the most important skill.
And we continue to emphasize the, as we reference them, habits of learning and teaching those in the classroom. And, and while it's super important to complete the practice opportunities, Director Glow, as you referenced, just the executive functioning of the narrative, referenced them too. So we still teach to those things, we still measure those things, and we communicate those as well, as Mary Jo talked about in Schoology and Skyward where they're shown. Because they're such an important part of the learning process. It's just separating them from the grade.
Andrew, questions?
Oh, I, I just, first, I want to thank you guys. I really like the student piece and involving the students and having the, the student goal, I think is really just top notch. And also, when it comes to involving students in your advisory, I, I see that it's not only leadership, but web and other groups. And I, I thank you for being really thoughtful with who you're involving, not just maybe the students who always are applying themselves to everything, but also students who maybe don't apply themselves as much. And really just, just my thoughts are that, you know, the, the transition from eighth to ninth can always be tough. And just, I know you guys have talked about how transitioning from eighth to ninth is, can be, can be tough and how grading with equity can, you know, the transition from that to, to A to F can be something. So it's just, you know, since this is year zero, and as we start to move on, it'll be really interesting to see how that works. So really just making sure you're working with eighth graders and then ninth graders and then even maybe a thing, you have eighth graders that you meet with once they're ninth graders in the first couple of months, to see how, how it's been going can be a really positive tool. I am excited for the next couple of years to see how that works and as, as students keep moving up and going higher grades to see how that learning for equity has really changed and hopefully affected them in a positive way. So I'm really excited about these changes. And I think you guys have done a really good job. So I'm excited to keep hearing positive feedback.
Thanks.
Um, I, I think, I want to say this, because I hear that a lot of people are concerned about how this impact their kids, right? And going back to what Erin says, there's always unmotivated kids. And in the past, we just kind of let kids do what they do. And as teachers, like, you know, okay, you passed, you did well, you failed. And we just, you know, it's kind of been that system. But I don't know if parents recognize that this way that we're doing things now is really asking teacher to provide different ways, more different ways to meet the diverse needs of your kids. And actually asking teachers to be more accountable, to provide different feedback all the time. And so those are extra things that we don't think about, that we don't know about when we think of this process. We just think, well, you know, how is it going to impact our, my grade? And there are things, you know, regardless of what we do, there's always different learners. But we're not getting the benefit, we don't realize the benefit that we're getting from the teachers who is doing actually a lot more intentional work. Because it's actually easy to be a professor to put out one test, right? And they know you did good and you did do good and then that's it, right? But to be very intentional about doing multiple type of testing, to be intentional about providing feedback at every point, and how do you move up individually, is immense credible hard work and it takes a lot of time. And I think we forget that that is the extra that we're getting with this process. And so I just wanted to add that because when Erin was saying like, yeah, so it makes me remind me of like, yeah, I could be an easy kind of, you know, one test teacher. It's very easy. Or doing this process that is actually forcing me as an educator to work a lot harder.
Yeah. And, and I, I gave a reflection to our staff via an email a couple of days ago about when I was in the classroom, we had a, a grading program. It was at that point in time, it was called a grade machine, where you would just put all the grades in and it would spit out in amber and that's the grade the kid got. You know, they got 200 out of 300 possible points. That's a 67%. They got a D+, circle it in and send off the grade. We had to circle at that point in time. We couldn't just send it electronically. But, so I reflected that at that point in time, me as a teacher, I was really passive in the grading. It was whatever the computer said. So we encouraged our teachers to go back and look at every kid's grade and say, does that grade reflect what a student is knows and is able to do? Because a lot of times, and we've talked in this group before about if a kid has a zero, how that taints the grade? Or if a kid didn't do well at the beginning, but did what, improved, how is that going to change a grade? So we encourage every teacher to look at every single one of their kids' grades to say, let's be an active member in the grading. Because that's just one piece of the puzzle, the grade that's in the, in School, in Skyward, that's just one piece of the puzzle. But you know so much more about this kid. And so it is, it's more work for our teachers, but it's the right work. It's looking at the kids and, and saying, this, this grade on the piece of paper, I know so much more about this kid than just that. And so how does that grade reflect? Because grades are a communication tool about what kids now aren't able to do. And we think this is the right communication tool. So, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Couple of questions. First, you, we talked a lot about how much work it is on the teachers. Can you explain a little bit about what support and training you've done with the teachers? You've got PLCs, you've got coaches?
Yeah, we've been, we've been growing our capacity over the last four years, really working to shift our mindset, reading research, doing book studies, providing, you know, bringing in wonderful people like Shelley Moore, who is helping our teachers think about mindset three and inclusive practices. We work together in our PLCs twice, twice weekly. We brought in Gator Time as a means to give teachers more opportunity to really align and consider their, their work together. We, we talk at Prinsell's Cabinet every two weeks about really dialing into things. And then PLC leads take that back to their teams and talk to their teams and make changes and, and do reflection. So we are in a constant state of conversation. And what is so exciting about where we are now is that, like, like one of the major things that we're talking about right now is, is the access to the level four and what is level four. And it's, it is very exciting to be able to get that discrete in the learning process, where we have said, we understand really clearly what it is to meet standard. It is a little hard to define for a kid who's, you know, all of our students, how to access beyond that. And so we are really having to grow our learning about how do we help our kids think on that more in-depth level? Whereas before, we just all accepted whatever was happening and couldn't really talk about it because it was different in every classroom, at every grade. And now we are so clearly aligned that we can dig into those really important pieces. So lots and lots of development reading.
That sounds great. So you're using the professional development time given to you by Gator Time, which you take advantage of the coaches as well. And then you've got the teacher-driven professional learning communities that run, I guess, at Gator Time?
At Gator Time also Thursday mornings. And then we also use some of our district time that we have on Wednesday afternoons. We do a lot of whole group learning and also some PLC work in, in those meetings too.
So teacher skills are growing pretty significantly through this as well.
We also, sorry, we also use our teachers. So we've had multiple opportunities where teachers are the experts. And our, our colleagues are able to go to them and see things that they're doing in their classroom. They share practices together and then think about, how could I take this practice from a math teacher and implement it in my classroom and as a language arts teacher? So it's been super cool to see our teachers stepping into those leadership roles and sharing their practice and doing so in such a targeted and clear way.
That's great. So a question on, so middle school is this really great transition time. You've got incoming from elementary outgoing to high school. I know you're focused on the high school to see that kids are going to succeed in the high school. Are kids coming into middle school prepared from elementary school? If you can help us understand, are we doing well in our elementary school?
I, I think obviously COVID has thrown a huge wrench into all of it. And I think almost every grade, K-12, will say that, that we have some catch-up to do in terms of academic and social emotional skills. I, I think that the, it'll be interesting to see the, the data points as they grow for, as we look at that fifth, that current sixth grade cohort as they move forward. But I think ultimately, and as Mary Jo has said this, our goal is to get our kids as early as possible to, to be thinking and to be learning. And what, and therefore whatever system they're put in is going to put them to, if they're going to be successful, they can do those skills. I think our fifth graders, not only are they coming in with skills, appropriate skills for thinking, problem solving, things like that, but man, are they excited to be at school every day. And that energy that they have, I think, just helps boost them to the next level. So in terms of the feeling, I think it feels really good. Our job is to also see, does the data support that as well?
Even listening at the superintendent's teaching and learning group the other day, listening to the teachers talk about the I-Ready adoption in math, and looking at all of the ways that kids have to enter into learning through that I-Ready program and the multiple of ways that they can demonstrate their learning, it was super cool and exhilarating to hear that. Because then they'll have more opportunity to experience advocating for their needs and, and really trying different avenues so that they're not coming in with that idea already cemented that there's one right way. And, because that has been really a challenge to try and break down, that it's not that you just submit work and wait for a grade. It's that you actually need to go through a learning process and think. And I hear our, our elementary colleagues really digging into that too. And it's super cool to feel that.
We, I mean, to Director Dune's point around the, the systems level change and the transformation, if I'm looking across that K-8 spectrum, I think we have a couple of things that we can do a lot better from the elementary to the middle school. One is, our terminology is not exactly the same in terms of standards-based grading and grading for equity. I think we can use some opportunities to really talk more about what is a four versus a three and two. So we have some alignment and we really haven't revisited that much with the elementaries. That has not been a point of emphasis. But it, I think that it's going to be, especially as we think about how do we make that even have a greater impact. And as I met with two of the elementary principals today in preparation for their presentations to you in a couple of weeks, really talking about, you know, where is that, where is that ceiling and where is that floor? And do we have those expectations set high enough? And do we have those expectations set high enough so that we can define it as a four? And we're not limiting and saying that three is kind of where we want to be. So there's some interesting conversations, and I think it will help the work that you're doing as we now work backward with that. So that's just my perspective on the K-8 spectrum.
I appreciate the work and executive function and making sure every challenge's challenged. If you're challenged, if you're getting a four, you're not just getting a B in a test and cruising through, and you're challenged if you're unmotivated to, to go up. So I, I appreciate showing the challenge at every level. Final question, sorry, is around student voice. You know, we've got in high school, the Voices for Change and all the student clubs. Can we think about bringing those to the middle school and giving it agency around that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we envision, I love the idea of, of talking to current ninth graders to talk about the transition in the grading model, but that, you know, we're, as Mary Jo said, we want to model what we're doing after the incredible work that the high school team has done. So it's, it's beyond what we've said here. I think you're absolutely right. It's empowering clubs and organizations to find ways that they can contribute to the conversation as, as a group, and to have that special voice into, into the work that we're doing.
Well, and just on this coming Tuesday, our Black Student Union is coming down to meet with kids at IMS during Gator Time. And our Just Community Group meets with the Voices for Change at the high school and does alignment and connection there. So, and our quilt bag has met with the GSA, so really trying to find ways to span what, what starts at the middle school and then just blossoms at the high school, and make sure that those, those are working in both directions.
Thank you. Any other questions for board members? Maggie Tyre? Well, thank you very much. We've had a long time with you because the high school postponed, so we took advantage of you.
We'll just, we'll skip next year.
Deny. We will, so we will take a break now. We will come back in five minutes after we move the tables, and we will do recognitions, and then if there's any public input, we will check for that, too. So with that, we'll be back at 5:58. Bring this meeting back to order, it's 5:58. Are we set to go? Okay, we're coming back out of recess from our October 27th school board meeting with our recognitions. Fred?
Thank you. We have several recognitions tonight, and we're actually going to kind of space them out a little bit. And so we're going to hold off on our drama group till they come. But I first want to bring up Catherine Shaw. Every spring, for the last nine years, The New York Times has run a student editorial contest. Middle and high school students from around the world craft opinion pieces on any topic they like. They are a maximum of 450 words, and they must be submitted, and each, and each piece must be submitted to the Times. This past spring, The Times received a record 16,664 submissions for this contest. It went through six rounds of judging by 68 judges over two months, and there were 11 winners selected by The Times. Obviously, with Catherine Shaw up here, we know the suspense, but one of those 11 winners is Catherine. She submitted an editorial titled "Mega Constellations: Stars You Don't Want to See in the Sky." I'll let you talk about that, but I also want to point out that Catherine is on our superintendent student advisory. She's in her second year serving in that capacity, and appreciate your leadership there. But tell us about your editorial.
Yeah, so first off, thank you to the board and for Superintendent Bundle and Mr. Henry for this opportunity. Basically, what I wrote about was mega constellations, which are when these sort of, sort of tech companies like SpaceX and Amazon, their new project, they send out satellites into lower Earth orbit, and that are designed to create these sort of mega constellations of satellites that generate broadband internet, which is supposed to expand access to internet as well as just kind of like overall increased access and coverage. And the thing about it, though, is that these sort of, these sort of broadband satellites, it's really easy for them to get disrupted or for malfunctions or these sort of breakages to occur. So what happens is that there's a lot of debris in orbit, which is super hard to get rid of, and overall, it sort of decreases connectivity and the ability for us to take, for example, photos of outer space or things like that. So overall, it's just harder to access outer space in general for these sort of tech companies to go in. So I thought this was a really important issue that I actually didn't know about beforehand. I actually found out about this through the speech and debate team, where one of the topics was that, like, these sort of private entities shouldn't be allowed to appropriate outer space. And one common example of a reason they should not is these sort of mega constellations. So I thought that was a really unique issue that not a lot of people knew about, even though it's a very big operation, and it's going to become probably exponentially greater in the future years, which is something that can be controlled if there's just even a slight amount of action, like these sort of, like coalitions to come together and impose regulations or something like that. So, yeah, that's what I wrote about. I think that it is an issue that hopefully people are able to know a little bit more about. And also through sort of like these sort of programs like speech and debate that Mercer Island supports, and like Mr. Wold, for example, is really supportive of our program and team, we're able to, all of us, learn more about these sort of issues that oftentimes we might not be able to sort of know about beforehand, so.
So Catherine, you would create, and then do a photo with you and our podcast winners as well. So I'm going to bring them up next, and then we'll do a photo with the board.
Okay, sounds good.
So if our podcast winners would come up along with Joe Bryant, who is here as well from the radio, as they come up, another New York Times-sponsored contest, they had their fifth annual student podcast contest. And in this contest, students have to create a maximum five-minute podcast that informs or entertains. The Times received a record 1,664 entries from middle and high school students across the country, and of these, we're pleased to tell you that three KMIH 88.9 The Bridge students were recognized and received awards from The New York Times. MIHS sophomores Chloe Yang and Umuta Josuila were two of only 29 honorable mentions handed out by The Times in the contest. Chloe's podcast was titled "Bridging the Gap: Education in the Global South Through a Ghanaian Lens." Umuta's podcast was titled "Cricket: The Sport That Unites the Divided." MIHS sophomore Haley Nguyen was named one of 10 winners for her podcast titled "When the Water is Calm." So Mr. Bryant, if you want to say a few words about the process, and then if each of the students want to talk a little bit about your podcast.
Well, this is about them, and I just want to say, we have incredible kids on this island. These three, Andrew sitting over there, Kathy was in my program for a year, do not debate her on anything. So for me, it's just, it's a real honor to be able to work with these students and to give them opportunities. The way The New York Times works is they're very particular, it has to be a certain amount of time, no copyrighted materials, and they did a lot of work, a lot of research, and frankly, I think we had at least a dozen more that could have been recognized, some really incredible broadcasting students here. So I just thank the board, I think Fred, Nick, everybody who lets us come in and do this every day. And like I said, it's their time, and I've already taken two months, so these are the guys you want to talk to. But thank you so much.
Okay, so thank you, School Board, for letting me, or letting me recognize my accomplishment. "When the Water is Calm" is about my dad's escape from Vietnam, from like his initial escape out to the open water until getting saved by a cargo ship after like seven days out at sea with no food or water. "When the Water is Calm" highlights my dad's journey of being a Vietnamese boat person, a journey that is so similar to thousands of other Vietnamese boat people, and I hope that by listening, you'll continue to listen to other people's stories, and you can resonate with some of the messages in the podcast.
I want to thank Mr. Bryant for exposing me to this great opportunity, and I'm so glad to be able to speak about my podcast here. But my podcast, Cricket: The Sport That Unites the Divided, is about two countries, India and Pakistan, India being my family's heritage and culture. And I went deep and explored how cricket is not just an underlooked sport in a lot of Western countries like the United States, but it's also a sport that really brings together Pakistan and India despite all of their differences and despite all the war that they've been having throughout all these years. And I think it can really offer a lens at, an issue that not many people really know about, and I am glad to be able to talk about it.
And my podcast, "Bridging the Gap," was about an experience that I had a few years ago. I traveled to Ghana with a group from the United States, and Richard Inka, the founder of the organization, he just really brought us into the culture and showed us what daily life was like, and I thought it was a really, really eye-opening experience.
The other thing I would say quickly is, these girls did this as freshmen in my intro class, and now they're only sophomores, so I can't wait to see what's coming this year for these, these three and more.
Absolutely. So if you, the four of you would come on up and bring the board around front and get a picture. You guys can stand across, if you want to get the logo behind you. And if any family members want to take a photo, feel free to jump on. Three, two, one. Okay, hold on, parents. Three, two, four. Yes. Come on in. Yeah, come on in, come on in. Yeah, there's a number on the list. Right there is perfect. So our drama team is right on cue, so perfect. We're coming downstage right, we're all set down. Last spring, the MIHS Drama had their first in-person musical since Mamma Mia in the fall of 2019. Directed by Daniela Melgar and Tori Sparrow, and musical direction by Dr. Heather McLaughlin Garbus, the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee was a hit for a variety of different reasons. In addition to the work on stage, the talented theater tech students under the leadership of Katie Ramsey and Sarah Geis designed and built sets, created a compelling lighting design, and worked as sound engineers. Each year, the Fifth Avenue Theater awards drama programs across the state for their work on musicals, and last June, all the hard work by our students and staff on this musical paid off. Our students in the categories, they, excuse me, they were lucky enough to win three awards from, from the following nominations. Our students in categories they were nominated in were Lydia, is it Hoag?
Lydia Hogg.
Hogg. Lydia Hogg as student lighting designer nominated for outstanding work by students in lighting design. An outstanding work by students in scenic design nomination was given to our tech theater class led by Katie Ramsey. Brielle Gredeck nominated for outstanding work by a performer in a supporting role. Lucas Vorkoper nominated for outstanding work by a performer in a supporting role. Mercer Island High School Magic Foot Choreographed by Tori Sparrow was nominated for outstanding work by students in a production number. There must be something behind that one. With a You Hit the High Note nomination, recognizing work by student orchestras, our orchestra led and conducted by Heather McLaughlin Garbus received a nomination, and three students won a Fifth Avenue Theater Award for outstanding work by a performer in a leading role, and they are Molly Atkinson as Olive, Devin Benaroya as Barpy, Kyle Gerstel as Barpy. Joining us tonight from our drama is Daniela Melgar, our director, Katie Ramsey, also director, and in the director, and in the midst of a very big production right now with Greece. Be sure to plug that, it's coming up. Be sure to buy your tickets, we're just around the corner. Uh, Sarah Geis.
Giza.
Giza, thank you, and Brielle Gredeck. So, did I miss anyone?
And Kyle Gerstel.
And Kyle Gerstel, thank you Kyle. Yes, and Barbie as well. Um, so Daniella, do you want to start with just an overall and Katie, just an overall um, snapshot into what they've really accomplished? And then uh, plugs for anything coming up and then students, we'd love to hear from you.
Absolutely, yeah. Spelling Bee was such a special show for us, you know, obviously being the first in-person musical. We did have a filmed musical, but just to have a live audience, we chose a smaller show. Usually the musical's a big cast, but you know, we didn't know where we would be in COVID world, so we chose a smaller show and we had two casts as a result. So um, a bunch of students, you know, were able to participate in the show. And the Fifth Avenue, you know, they've been coming to all of our shows and we've received, you know, I mean, it's been years, Heather. Yeah, it's been years. We've received a couple of nominations with Rent, our first musical, but um, it'd been a while and this show, it felt special as we were working on it. Like it felt amazing and wonderful and of course, I'm biased, um, but I was like, if we don't get a nomination, I'm going to be upset. Uh, but then they just kept coming, like as I was going through the list, I was like, oh my gosh, we got them in all the categories. And it was especially wonderful with Sarah and Katie um, with the Tech Theater Class um, to have our first nominations for that work and acknowledgement of Student Lighting Design and Student, you know, Student Stage Manager, so that was really special. And also for our orchestra um, composed of students as well on the work that they did on the show under Heather's direction as the musical director, but also the conductor. So it was a really, really lovely show. I think we had fun, um, and I was really proud of the work and uh, hi Devin. Devin's not here, but um, but he should be here, but um, but he's in college. So anyway, uh, we're so grateful to be acknowledged by all of you and acknowledged by the Fifth and um, yeah, drama rocks.
Yeah, and to plug, what is up next? Cause right, what can we do next? Uh, we decided to do Greece this year and it's really exciting because you know, the uh, Greece prequel is coming out on Paramount Plus, so um, we are ahead of that curve, so so we're running, um, and, and these lovely students, these award winners are also in Greece, right? So come and see them, be brilliant once again. Um, and Sarah Giza is running um, in the set design and students are hard at work um, in our Theater Tech Course, creating everything they need to for the show. It's November 10th to the 12th and the 17th to the 19th at 7:00 PM in the good old pack. So we hope to see everybody there.
We have some matinees, don't we?
We don't, no matinees.
I think Maggie Ty wanted to say something on the screen.
Hi Maggie.
Everyone, I just wanted to say, as a person who got pulled up from the audience to take part in the musical, what a very special musical that was. And I will tell you, I have been to a lot of musicals over my decades as a parent and that was really very special from like the set to the music, to the, the dancing, the singing, the comedy, the, the cast was like so kind and helpful to those of us who got pulled up on stage. It just had like an amazing feeling to it, like the whole thing. Like in Japanese, there's a phrase you can use that means basically like the feeling is good, that was my feeling, but like the feeling was really good. So um, I'm wishing you all the best of luck uh, with everything you're doing this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Students, anything you want to share?
I'll speak. We're actually just standing out there and I was like, Melgar, can I get a speech? And she was like, no. And I was like, oh. Yeah, uh, so I'm a sophomore right now and I, I guess I just want to take this opportunity, you know, obviously the Fifth Award was great and a, a great boost to my ego. But at the same time, like at the end of the day, like after I came home and all the adrenaline rushed off, like I remembered that yes, you know, an award is important and it's kind of cliche, um, but you know, the process really was uh, the special part and I think the part that we should be celebrating. Uh, you know, I came in last year, I didn't have the best time in middle school. The middle school did not have a musical program for over 10 years, so I actually started that program when I was in eighth grade and uh, it's continuing to do student-directed musicals now. Um, and so coming in uh, and being able to be a part of such a great show and then also being in Drama One, uh, having the wonderful experience, uh, I want to be a director when I'm older, so uh, Ms. Melgar actually gave me the opportunity to co-direct our show. Uh, and I just, the amount that my, both my mental health has increased, but also like the practicality of what I've been learning in school and how um, engaged I've been uh, with it has really increased to a remarkable extent with uh, the drama program. Uh, and so with that, um, I do find it somewhat upsetting uh, that currently, you know, I, I moved here in second grade, that year I spoke at the city council meeting to talk about MICA, uh, and since then, really there's been no improvement. Um, while the school drama program, obviously we have an amazing theater, we have amazing staff, um, but we still really don't get the resources that I think uh, we deserve for the amount of work it does for students. So I guess uh, I will use this platform as many Oscar speakers do, to say, they lost more money, thank you. And come see Greece.
Kyle is Danny's ego.
Greece is the word.
Yes, the word. Brielle, Molly?
Thank you, this is very fun, it was a very fun show. Um, it's very nice, online call is right now, so it's nice to say, I think the activity is Fifth Ave Award winner. Um, but yeah, it was very fun, I loved the show, it's one of my favorites for sure.
Yeah, it was definitely kind of surreal getting to perform in front of a musical in front of a live audience for like the first time since my freshman year. And it was just really fulfilling and just kind of after being online and doing Zoom shows um, for so long, it kind of, I had kind of, you know, fallen out of why I do drama and then, you know, getting back on the stage and hearing the crowd and just being able to perform again with such an awesome cast and you know, uh, staff and directors. It just, it was so, it really just was like, wow, this is why I do what I do, what I, what I do and spend so much time doing. And it's a lot of rehearsals, it's a lot of time after school, but it really is really, really fun and awesome and yes, come see Greece.
I also want to quickly add that I think that Spelling Bee, no, but if you think about the plot of Spelling Bee, you know, it's about six, for those of you who didn't see it, shame on you, but uh, it's about six, ah, sorry, but it's about six prepubesans who like uh, go into a spelling bee and then they, they fight over it and there's audience participation and it's super funny. Uh, but at the heart of it, it's about, you know, six outcasts doing something that they're really passionate about, dedicate so much time to, it results in one final uh, presentation and even if they don't necessarily um, win or in our case, sometimes, you know, get the role that we're looking for, um, you know, they were still there for the process. And so I think that it perfectly encapsulates everything that, you know, we all love about theater.
So, all those who were involved, please come on up and we'll get a picture with the board. Okay, there you go, David, he was right behind you, so. Are we all in there?
Who should be looking at?
I guess the, the.
Yeah, move this one a little bit, yeah, there, there you go. Three, here we go, three, two, one. Perfect, anyone else? All right. Back to practice or are we done for the night?
Done for the night.
Okay.
Okay, let's uh, let's, let's bring us back. Thank, thank you very much. It's great hearing from, from the students themselves and uh, in our first voice, so thank you for that, Fred, uh, much, much appreciated. Um, and uh, in terms of uh, spending money on drama, we are doing a facilities uh, long-range plan discussion, so I hope uh, that input is sent to the board uh, as they think about it as to how we should be spending money on drama. I do appreciate MICA uh, isn't in the place we wanted it to be and the schools uh, should think about how we step in, so much appreciated. Uh, with that, let us move on to one E, uh, sorry, one D, public input. Uh, we do not have any public input today. Uh, we do appreciate hearing from the public. Uh, again, I, we appreciate all the feedback that has gone to school principals and teachers directly and issues get handled there uh, as well. But if you want to send issues to the board that you think cover the whole district, please do so. Public input, as always, most appreciated, though there is none today. And sorry, now to Superintendent Report, Juan Eze, thank you, Fred.
All right, thank you. Um, two things tonight, uh, first off, just want to recognize that the Mercer Island High School was recently recognized for consistently creating global citizens through a partnership with the American Field Service or AFS. Uh, Mercer Island High School has been recognized for being one of the top 75 schools across the United States based on the number of students we've supported over the years for study abroad programming. Uh, and AFS is in their 75th year and so we're in the top 75. And so that just came kind of this week and want to recognize Suzie Brown, um, and Jamie Prescott and others who have really been at the forefront. The other uh, announcement I have tonight is I'd like to share with the board um, some results from a recent survey that we um, completed as part of the Superintendent Transition Plan and my Communication Plan that I put forward. Um, we did some, uh, we added an additional survey this year that we haven't necessarily done in the past. And so as OE 10 requires, uh, we do our surveys of families who have left the district. And we do that survey twice each year to capture those who left kind of during the school year and then those who might have left over the summer. Um, but this year, Ian and I worked together to create a new family survey. And so all of our families who were new to the school district, um, we surveyed to try to get a sense of why they chose Mercer Island, um, and then also gather some other information. So I wanted to share with you just some of the results um, from that. The first question was, did they move specifically for our schools or our school district? Um, and as you can see from the information here, I've kind of slid it up, that uh, about a third uh, moved here specifically for our schools, about half, it was part of their dis, their decision-making and then a smaller percentage there, um, that it wasn't necessarily the schools, um, though they're here. We then wanted to get a sense of where were they before, um, where were their children? And so as you can see, some of our students are new kindergarteners and so they were, might have been in private preschools. Others were in public schools in Washington or private schools who have come to Mercer Island School District, um, or public and private from a different um, uh, state or coun, uh, state, and then a few from international schools. So um, just trying to get a sense of where are they coming back or where are they coming to us from? Then we wanted to get a sense of um, what kind of resources or what kind of tools are they using when they're making decisions about schools? And so knowing that the website is a critical component, uh, that's a critical piece to inform us as we build and transition to a new website. Um, social media, um, not as strong, but we know that the Google search is, and so we've looked into some things, um, such as niche and others where we might be able to continue to um, build our brand, but we also know that family and friends play a critical piece, which speaks to why we need to continue to engage and partner with our community. Um, we also wanted to know, what are they also considering? What were families considering in addition to their public option here on Mercer Island? Um, and so some were considering other public options uh, in the state, um, certainly private options in the, in the state and then also our private schools here on Mercer Island um, came into uh, play for some of our, our families who answered the survey. Then we wanted to know, once they chose us, how was that transition and that enrollment process? And um, as you can see that we, it was fairly positive, um, but if there were things that we, that um, we heard most in the feedback, um, a lot of the improvement areas, as you can see, is the documentation required for our enrollment uh, was arduous. Availability of staff over the summer as they're trying to enroll um, was a challenge, uh, communication and website information, um, things like um, innovation learning and our bus transportation wasn't as prominent or, or um, evident to some of our families. Children in some cases felt behind compared to their private schools and so perhaps some more information about our expectations or our standards would have helped some families. Um, and then certainly cleaning up our student and family access to Skyward. If I can think about some of these, um, the documentation required for enrollment, we will definitely continue to take a look at that, especially when you have to prove your residency and you know, if you're just moving here, you don't have bills and that can be challenging, so we've got to continue to look at that. The high school, uh, with the availability of office staff over the summer, they're already working on a plan to have someone in their main office once a week, but then also to use our summer school um, admin assistant as a, as a point of entry for our families because they're here three days a week. Um, so we're working on some things there. Obviously, our website is under development in terms of our new process and then uh, we want, we're going to be transitioning to what we call cumulative, which is the new Skyward. So we'll have a new Skyward upgrade to cumulative, that will happen over the summer. Uh, so we believe that cumulative will be a better experience for our students and our families and our staff. So we're working on some of these already and then as you can see, we have some areas of strength. Some commented on the excellent options available to students and the resources. Um, some commented on the school board and the diversity and the representation of the community, um, the follow-through and communication and then strong recommendations, reviews from parents and online sources. Um, so Ian, did you want to comment whether any other things that you wanted to kind of add?
Um, one of the things that we had, uh, we received feedback, which wasn't really an area of improvement or an area of strength, I thought, when we were doing it, was several families suggested an idea, which is something that I'm going to look forward to, look into exploring, is that several families, a buddy program for those students that are new, if there's a way to partner them or buddy them with a current student to introduce them to um, the community and introduce them to the school district. And it was such, it was mentioned about four times and it struck me as, what is that? It got me thinking as to, how, how do we do that? How do we, how do we impact that? And I just found that interesting, then from the survey where you're asking for feedback, positives or negatives, four to five people all had the same idea and they're all new, so they don't know each other, they don't have a connection at that time. So it was very, it was very intriguing and, and got me thinking and it's something that I'm going to look at to see how do you, how do you do that? How do you, how do you make it happen? Because obviously if it's a kindergartner that's new and a ninth grader that's new, it's different schools, it's different times, it's different logistics, so I just found that very intriguing.
One sort of thought that I had, um, sort of over, you know, the school board meetings where we have these um, recognitions of the accomplishments, you know, particularly at the high school level where there's the opportunities from New York Times and podcasts, athletics, if maybe on the website, it makes sense to have like sort of a select number of accolades, um, just cumulatively posted to give a sense of all the various ways in which students are able to distinguish themselves and do so on a national level. Um, seems like it might be like a very attractive thing for parents considering coming to the district.
Do you want to give a prelude to some work that we're doing along those lines to highlight some of those things?
Yeah, we're, we're going to work on um, about a four to six week, maybe seven weeks, six to eight, four to six, uh, newsletter of highlights and things that are happening um, within the district and within students across um, all grades. So we're, I'm starting to put together that information and, and use it within um, our email system and then how that translates to using um, presenting those accolades within Parents Square, which we're launching a two-month trial of, which will be a more robust platform for newsletters, for implementation of photos, graphics, um, and with our new website, the implement, the possibility to put video on the site and have it on our platform as opposed to launching someone up into YouTube or into a social media platform and they stay on our platform and hopefully scroll through our platform and, and scroll and they stay on our platform and hopefully scroll through our platform and scroll over our website, find out information and stay connected to the site without having to leave the site. So if they get email and drive them to the site, how they stay on the site, connect with the site through the new website, through a newsletter that is hopefully a little bit more robust than the school messenger, and how those all sort of connect together to highlight and communicate everything that's going on, accolades, national events, sports, arts, everything. So that's sort of the big overview.
And then having, thinking about a new, you know, the new family page on our current website is really, right now, I would say focused from June, July, and August, and then it kind of sits idle. But we have new families who are looking at the district, obviously, not just during those months. And so how do we make something like that more evident? And then we have our video production class. We're in the rough, we're in the early stages of this, but our new video production class is working with Ian right now to create a, more of a highlight and video form of the Board Buzz that we used to have. So they'll be taking, they're going to be looking at taking stories from our meetings here and then creating video out of them to be able to tell a story in the community as well. So we're in the early stages. We're going to do a trial in November and then hopefully launch in December.
Very early stages. Talk history.
So kind of going back to what Dan was saying, and because I'm looking at your new families enrollment information page, and we assume that families are already wanting to enroll. But then it's like, how do we use this opportunity to highlight why they want to be here? And so it's funny that you have this on the agenda today because the last couple of days, I've been communicating with a family from Singapore and moving to Amazon. And then they reached out to me because they found me on the website and they found, they're Vietnamese, I'm Vietnamese, and they're like, oh, so we're debating, you know, and we saw our apartments. And so I spent, so we became Facebook friends. And then I spent like, you know, hours through a couple of days helping them pick apartments, you know, what's the difference between Mercer Island and Bellevue? And then, you know, connecting them to the Vietnamese church in Taekwila and all these things. And so they're like, okay, we want to be at Mercer Island.
The job director's day.
And then I connected them, they're like, it was a little bit confusing how to enroll. And then, so I emailed Mary Jo, and so I don't know who that is a registrar person, and she really quickly responded and connecting. And so I think that personal, like you said, having a hard time to, because it's hard to navigate. And, you know, they're dealing with moving a whole family. And for this particular family, I guess in Singapore, apartments are furnished, and they're just stressed because none of the apartments here are furnished. And so I connect, I go, oh, you can sign up for free Mercer Island. All this, like I'm next door and all these things. And I'm like, oh, this is great. But it reminds me how stressful it is for them. And how do we do a competitive, so there are a lot of people searching, you know, as they are from other countries moving here. And as they're searching, you know, how are we really advertising ourselves? And is it easier? And then when I look at this, it doesn't highlight us, it shows us, oh, you're planning here already, but it's not still at the, hey, how is Mercer Island better than Bellevue? Right? And so, so I think we really need that because it is kind of, because for them, it doesn't, you know, I mean, we're very, it looks the same, and they just really look at numbers and they look at all these. So I think that that's a really great idea, that we should really make bigger. Yeah, so yeah, end of October, December, yeah, new.
I think, I think that what Tam is saying is that, that, first of all, thank you for doing that, Tam, for representing our district so well. But that that page right now is like the how, not the why. So there needs to be kind of like, the first question on there should be, why Mercer Island? You know, like, it's pretty rare that a family's already like, yes, we're definitely buying a house, moving there and putting our kids in the school district, right? Like, there might be like, most people are thinking about a few possibilities when they start looking into the schools. So like, and the why can be like material that like Ian was describing that can be used elsewhere too, right? Like, but, but if you think from the perspective of, and I, I've done the same thing with another family that was moving here from Europe last year, they had a lot of questions, for example, around how their child's education, their children's education would, would, would link up with the grade levels here, and particularly around language, where their kids are ahead, like in learning some other languages, how, you know. So who would be the right person to, you know, for them to reach out to with questions about language level, about this, about that? One, one website that I looked at during the superintendent's search that I really liked had, like for every kind of FAQ question, it was like, here's the right person in the district to reach out to if you have questions about, you know, AP courses or whatever. So have, giving them like that very kind of practical connection, I think, would be helpful too.
Yeah, I'd say just to build on that, maybe more like private schools, which are trying to attract students, like, like all the private schools are saying, why, you know, why choose us? Why pay, you know, $30,000 or $15,000 a year for this education? I think if we sort of, you know, borrowed some of that in terms of telling our story, I mean, it would, it would help as well as, I think, with MISF and donations in the same way, sort of have that lens of almost a private school for, for website rather than public school, which I don't think generally has that sort of perspective.
No, you could even look to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just saying, and also tied to community resources, this person has an Amazon transition person to help them with all the housing and things like this, but there were like parks, is it walking the distance? And so tied to how safe Mercer Island is. So I think just also this page tied to some of our community resources, and we're very blessed to be, have a lot of resources on Mercer Island. How about the parks, you know, how, so those kind of things that we can link would be great too.
We could also look at the page that the band put together last year when they were worried, or last year or the year before, when they were worried about band funding potentially being cut. And they, they really quickly put together an amazing little like page with videos from band students and little kind of testimonials from parents and from students about what band had meant to them. It would be great to see people say like, this is what Mercer Island schools have meant for my family, you know, this is what Mercer Island schools have, have meant for me, have done for me.
I know that, I mean, we all know how important mentor-mentee relationships are in, for so many things, including community building. And I know that especially with our elementary schools, they make such an effort to welcome new students and kind of, you know, the principals will pick students to be their buddy, or teacher will pick someone to be their buddy. You know, parents need buddies too. And so, you know, and, and with similar interests and values. And, you know, I mean, we find those through culture and religion and athletic interests. And, and, you know, those are the most meaningful, like some people have the courage to go on Facebook and say, hey, I'm looking for this and this and this, but some people don't or they don't know that that resource is there. So it'd be great if in new families, if we had somewhere where, you know, do, do, you know, put me in touch with a parent or put me in touch with the, you know, whatever type of person they're looking for to answer questions. That way we can then reach out to them or whoever is.
The PTA?
PTA often does it. I don't know if they're more focused on it in the beginning of the year. I mean, I know, you know, even growing up here and, you know, with, even growing up here, coming in with a kid in kindergarten, I mean, I felt totally lost, like how much, you know, like how, how do we do this? And, you know, I mean, just having some sort of parent mentor, you know, for the, for those that don't, you know, already have a built-in connection, I mean, that just can make all the difference.
No other, you know, I've talked to staff about this and other, no other time, at least in the state of Washington, has the competition for schools been so great. And, and that's from the online providers. The charter, schools aren't as a competition for us, but they are in the region. And though they're public, they're certainly competing for those same students. And private schools, public schools. So we definitely have to keep our eye on that, which is why we wanted to figure, learn more about why people are choosing us, so that we know what we can do better for the next ones coming in, but also we can up our game on those places where they're picking. Just two other things. We, Andrew and Asha and two other students from our superintendent advisory, we were contacted by District Administrator, which is a national school publication magazine. They found us online for our superintendent student advisory, and so they're running a story and they want to interview, they contacted me and I said, well, you shouldn't talk to the students. I got them next Wednesday. So we're going to be interviewed by a columnist next week for that. And want to certainly give credit to Superintendent Koloski, who had started that group. And now we're trying to advance it and move it to the next level. So look forward to that, Andrew. And then the last one would just be building off of what Aaron Miller had mentioned and in his opening remarks, that, you know, you know, on behalf of the Mercer Island School District, I fully support and affirm what Mrs. Budgets had written in her message to the students and the families in the classroom that was impacted by the antisemitic comment that was made, that, you know, for us, you know, we're striving, as you heard, for a deep sense of belonging for all of our students. And that's been certainly put to the test for some of our students in those classes. But, you know, we'll aim to disrupt those attempts that work, our, our desire to make sure that we have classrooms where everyone belongs and, you know, we're going to stand up to and not tolerate antisemitism. One of the resources I had found, so after it had happened and I had learned about it, we have a no surprises kind of mantra amongst our administrators. Mary Jo had called me right away. And, you know, I reached out to the ADL, who, incidentally, I have a meeting with the regional director who lives on Mercer Island tomorrow. It was pre-planned, but we're meeting tomorrow for coffee. I reached out to our friends at the Holocaust Center for Humanity as well as the JCC. I think it's important to be transparent about these incidences and also seek their guidance. And one of the resources that was shared by the ADL talks about, you know, the best ways to respond to these incidents. And the first one is to make sure that your system is ready in the first place. Each time we have these, we learn where we weren't ready or where we were. The next one is to make sure that we investigate and that you really have to take your time and do the investigation correctly so that those impacted feel a sense of support, but you also get your facts correct and your story straight. And, and I know that the community wants quick responses, they want lots of communication. And we will continue to communicate, but we want to make sure that we do it thoughtfully. We're an educational institution with a lot of different moving parts and kids are at stake here. The next one is that communication piece. And I'll be putting out more statements tomorrow on behalf of the district, but the last is education. And so what are we going to do next? And, you know, Mary Jo and the teacher will be with that class tomorrow. Harry Brown from Youth and Family Services has been working with students and available. And then, incidentally, and to put another plug in for our drama department, I had learned last week that Daniela Melgar is going to be directing and the students will be performing their winter play, which is And a Child Shall Lead. It's based on the true story of a group of children trapped in a Jewish city that the Nazis had created. And it's going to, the, the story shows the strength, fear, hope, resilience, and human connection that was made through those experiences. And leading up to that, then, she's going to be bringing in a Holocaust survivor to do some, to do some talks. But what I'm really interested in is she's, has a group of students who are going to lead a forum on what it's like to grow up Jewish in Seattle and on Mercer Island. And so I reached out to Daniela and she's talking to those students about actually going down to the middle school and having the same kind of conversation. So I think we're following those four steps some ways better than others, but we're working really hard. I am disappointed that it happened in our schools, but we'll use it as an opportunity to get better. That's my report.
Thank you very much for a very rich and very timely report. We know communication is very important towards bringing students back, recruiting and retaining new parents and students. And we very much appreciate the need to create a sense of belonging in our school. And I, I, I attended a diversity course last night, and the definition of belonging was given as people have the agency to ask for what they need. So I think that's, that's really true, that when something happens to you, you can ask the greater system for help and for support. And that's, that's exactly what happened in, in this situation. Parents and students being, feeling safe and feeling free to ask the community, ask the school district, and, and demand, you know, demand what they feel is important and restoration for their trauma and for their children to make sure they grow up well. Never happened when I was growing up, and I super appreciate just the depth that this is happening to these days. So thank you very much for that, that very rich report. With that, very quickly, let's move on to partial governance process monitoring, B, Board Policy 1807, Financial Administration and Asset Protection. Please, Fred.
I'm going to turn it over to Director Sullivan to talk a little bit about the surplus process and this resolution.
What you have in front of you is Resolution 716, Declaration of Surplus Property. I'm assuming in this district, this comes before you probably twice a year, semi-annually.
Or sometimes not at all. So, but we do plan to now, that's part of it.
What I'm used to is, is a resolution such as this coming before the board twice a year. In this case, approval of this resolution gives power to the staff, if you will, to dispose of, sell, or recycle, e-cycle surplus school property. In this case, it's miscellaneous technology related items, and the list is also a part of this. Thank you. You have 492 iPads, 56 iMacs, 81 MacBooks, 41 Windows laptops, and three Windows desktops ready to be surplused.
Is, are, are students ever given the opportunity to purchase any of these for these costs?
We have had surplus sales in the past. One challenge has just been staffing and coordinating and being able to support that. When we've done the surplus sales, they've typically been on PC devices that we sold in bulk. The last surplus sale we had was probably six or seven years ago. It's been a while. Generally, our, our Apple devices do tend to hold their value better rather than selling them in lots. We use a vendor to recycle them, or it's not recycling, it's, it's purchase. And they, they provide us with, with fairly significant value, so that that has come up. And that is something that we'll continue to have discussions on and talk about how we can make them available to the students. But it has happened, we have that, but it for some time.
I don't know how much interest that would be, but I do know, I mean, depending on what direction we end up going in with the new technologies, especially for the high schoolers, there's a lot of interest in the MacBooks and even if they're a few years old.
If the fair, what I'm hearing, Director Onzer, is the fair value on here is not what you get from the companies that buy back or?
No, this is, this is the, the value that we typically get from the companies, although I, I, I am just looking at this, and the iMacs and the MacBooks do sell for more. Not significantly more, they have come down in price, but I think it's closer to like 140, you know, per, per unit there. We have been utilizing a, a third-party company to help us with this, this buyback. Frequently, we have seen returns of anywhere between 40,000 to 75,000. Oftentimes, that gets put back into our refresh when we purchase our new devices.
So these vendors provide support to erase these machines and?
Correct, yeah, we get a certification that they, they've been erased, go through a process of releasing them from our management systems. And they, they provide us with like an asset report and then the certification of, it's not a second certification that they've been destroyed, like they wouldn't be a recycling company, but that they've been like.
Yes, they've been readily decommissioned and.
Correct.
Whatever, however they do next with it, our, we've been protected. We're not responsible for warranties or any services or anything like that, which we would have to do if we then sold it to somebody in the community, for example.
Correct.
As an addendum, as part of the resolution process, state law, if we intend to sell a new market, as you see there, fair market value for items. If we don't intend to sell, we can simply surplus them how we see fit.
Okay, with that, could I have a motion to approve Resolution 716, please?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And with that, do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Against? And we are six zero in favor. All right, let's move to the next item. C, Board Policy 1806, Budgeting and Financial Planning, September 2022, Dashboard.
Great. So last week, you saw the kind of prelude to the dashboard. And so I want to turn it over to Director Sullivan again. This is kind of the first look at our 2223 budget. Keep it in mind that next board meeting is when you're going to see the closeout for the 2122 school year. So, Director Sullivan.
As we introduced to you at the last meeting, October 13th meeting, this dashboard. And now we have actually data in it, which makes it exciting to me and kind of living at this point. There's numerous parts to this. I want to start in the upper kind of left-hand corner and point out to you the 8.3% of the fiscal year, obviously, in one month and the 12. And that's kind of a data point to keep in mind as we look at the numbers, whether it be expenditures or revenues we walk through here. I've broken down the different main kind of expenditures that we have within our district. And I can walk you through those. They're pretty self-explanatory, but obviously, basic education is what it is. It's not special education, it is general education. And the expenditures were almost 2.8 million in September. Item two, federal stimulus. This is our ESER funds, kind of our final phase, because we've got one, two, and now three. And this is obviously a kind of receiving rear type of funding where we have to basically go back and say, this is what we fund. Can you give us the money? And in this point, we have $43,675. Special education, and speaks for itself. We have vocational education, the next line, CTE, as we know it here as CCR. Then we have federal expenditures, obviously, our grants, our IDEA, our title, our bilingual. Then we have other instructional and community services such as high cap, summer school, et cetera. Then we have a larger one, support services, which encompasses everything from food service to transportation to maintenance and operation is what's the catch-all in that line. And then for our total expenditures for the months, about 4.7 million. And then below that, we have encumbrances. These are our open POs we start in the beginning of the year. And a lot of that is, you know, salaries, benefits, or large contracts we may have for, let's say, Nelson Petroleum that fills up our gas tanks out here for diesel and for our buses. And as the year goes on, you'll see that number obviously decrease as we, you know, pull off that PO. And then once again, we have percent of monthly actual versus annual budget, that's 6.6%. And as that data point pointed up top, that 8.3% is kind of a look at where we stand for that month. So we're kind of under budget, if you will, in regards to the month itself. And then what I did is I went back five years and looked at the five-year average, where last year and years before we stood, and then we're at 7.5%. So the numbers look pretty good thus far. If we look at revenues, there's the four major categories. Of course, local is our EPNO, levy, timber tax, student fees, mainly at this point in the year because we receive our local taxes in October and then April. This is typically either old collections and/or student fees that are coming in. Of course, we have state apportionment, the money the state gives to run our schools. Then we have our federal grants, IDEA, title, et cetera. And then we have other donations, cap tech dollars, if there is anything in the Esper grant, which is the best start for kids grant, we receive money from Keene County. Our total actual revenue of about 4.7 million. Once again, you see that 6.9% in relation to the 8.3. And revenues typically lag behind aside from, once again, the month of October and April, when those large sums of money come in for local taxes. And that kind of makes up the difference throughout the 12 months. So when October rolls through and present that, hopefully, it'll be in December, just because the way we receive the treasury reports from Keene County, you'll see this huge influx of money coming in. Revenue will spike because the local taxes have come in. Once again, you have a five-year average regarding revenues, about 7.3%. And then percent of annual apportionment I put in here, how much apportionment the state gives us month, the month, the month, this is at 9%. So I give this kind of a touch point there. And then below, we have our fund balances of our five major funds. And I would like to point out and give a thanks to Director Glowitz. Today, he emailed me regarding a question around our general fund. If you notice, it says 438,000. Obviously, that's significantly lower than where we thought we would be getting here. The caveat to that is we are still, business services team is still reconciling last year. So once they complete that, it should be very, very soon. You'll see that number bump up because then that fund balance carries over at that point. So no worries at this point. But once again, thank you for pointing that out and emailing. I do appreciate that. And we have our capital, debt service, ASB, and transportation for a total balance, if you will, in the bank of almost $20 million.
So I really, thank you. I really like this dashboard. I, a couple suggestions is like for the enrollment, it's fine with me if that just because, like, if it doesn't need to be visualized, it's pretty stable, like, once, like, you know, we get the October numbers, right? I would, I do find it very helpful to have a visualization, particularly with respect to the general fund balance, for actual versus projected and to be able to track it from month to month. I mean, so that's, those would be the two suggestions. I mean, perhaps for consistency, if it's easy enough to do a visualization too for capital, debt service, ASB, and transportation, although those are, particularly transportation is, you know, much more stable and stagnant for long periods of time. But certainly, for the general fund, just seeing, you know, the projected versus the actual over the year, it is, makes it very easy to sort of see where we're at, where the spikes are, and sort of how much we trail, you know, behind or ahead. Obviously, you get that in the numbers, but visualization, you know, is, is much easier to grasp all at once. And then-
So I'm sorry, with the general one, it's month to month, how the?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Like, just the, and then, as I said, for cleanup, I don't need a visualization of FTE one because it's, I imagine it's going to be pretty much a flat line across the year. So just the number is helpful, but doesn't need to make up space.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
Just a question. Is, on the capital, have we, how much of the field improvements have we paid? I mean, are we expecting a big chunk of that to go out towards the field?
We are expecting a big chunk to go out. We also have a significant sum coming from the City of Mercer upon completion. So we expect to see around three to four million go out and finally pay that on the South Mercer Playfield. But we also have about 750 to a million coming in from the City of Mercer to meet their commitment. So once everything's finalized, we'll do the transfers, if you will, the payments.
Thank you.
Maggie Chau? Andrew?
I've knocked in a major in finance. Is what I've worked for the best. I'm glad he's here. And it looks good. So.
Learned one new thing.
And, and the visualization, as I said, for the capital also, I mean, would be, would be useful. I mean, like, in general, yeah, obviously.
How does our loan show up in this at all?
I can show that also. We can track that throughout the year if you'd like.
Yeah, and I believe we've got an interest payment of that too, right? So we should be showing the accrual of the interest as well. And I appreciate the way you've done encumbrances on the expenditures side. So my, the question on the revenue side is, we want to know, while we get these big payments in for taxes, we should still be, you know, dividing by 12, and we should understand what revenue is per month in some sense, right? We, it's actually accrued each month. You don't want to get a big chunk in and then suddenly lose track and you're overspend. You're spending more revenue than you really have allocated for that month. How do you think about showing that? Will that still show up? How do you think about that?
It's a good question. When I tackled in my time on Bashan, I wanted to see something similar. We don't, like, do this in general for month to month to month. And we've always struggled to agree over there on how to show that. It's a good question. I'll have to think a little bit more on it and see how best to deliver that.
Okay. Any other thoughts? And, oh, do we have one, anything else to present? Sorry?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was very helpful, actually. Cheers. Moving on to 2D, Budget and Financial Planning, Rockinell's OSPI Proposed Plan for School Funding.
So this was a request that you had as a team to put on tonight's agenda to at least start a conversation. And I know that Director Lurie, Director Tucker, and Director Glowitz attended the WASD Region Two meeting last night. So I'm really going to turn this over. Staff is here to answer questions. And I know that this is, you know, kind of part one. Part two will be some of our long-range facility planning study session on the board. Part three, though, the big one, will be in December when we do our budget study session as we ramp up for the legislative session. That being said, there is some urgency here because we do stand to be pretty significantly impacted under the proposal that was put forward by Superintendent Reitdahl. So we'll participate as needed. Wanted to turn it over.
Dan, would you like to give us a quick?
Yeah, so I mean, for those that are listening in, and just sort of, so everyone in the board is on the same page. So last Thursday, I guess a week ago, OSPI and Reitdahl adopted some of the proposals from the compensation committee. And it's the first time, to zoom out for a moment, the first time post-McLeary in four years that the regionalization rate is up for consideration, to be adjusted, along with the appropriate rebasing of salaries for, for the tables, that plugs into state apportionment dollars.
Dan, can I explain for people what the regionalization rate is?
Yeah, yeah. So the regionalization rate, when, four years ago, in sort of the aftermath of the McLeary decision, where the court said that the state had to fund public education in the state, said that, okay, we will set a certain amount, the basic education allocation, the VEE, that's based upon FTE, the number of students in a district, as well as a regionalization rate, which reflects higher cost of living in areas such as the Seattle area compared to other areas, Spokane, Yakima, non-metropolitan areas. And it's one, like, the base is one, and then it goes up to 1.18. So at a very basic level, in our region, we get 18% more per student to reflect the fact that cost of living is many multiple times more. I mean, particularly when it comes to home prices in our district that are north of $2 million. That was a deal that was struck. I mean, I think there is an argument that it was pretty narrow to begin with. If you look at a peer school district in California, such as the Palo Alto School District, now, it's different because there's, there's localization and greater flexibility with levies. But that school district, which is the top-rated school district in California, gets 162% of the median spending per student. Mercer Island is 88% of the median. We are below the median. If you take, look at a financial website such as Wallet Hub that rates equity and how districts compare, we're actually the least equitable major school district in the state because we're so underfunded, given the cost of living on Mercer Island. And so what, so what that causes is a difficulty to pay wages that are sensible, given the funding that we receive. This recommendation would cap the top regionalization factor at 1.12, just a 12% in, you know, more than the lowest, you know, than the lowest in the state, than OMAC, Kennewick, you know, et cetera. And this hits every school district in our region. Is it 1.18 or actually, in some cases, 1.2 because of sort of some legacy issues of how funding was done in some of the, the school districts to the north of us. But it includes Kent, it includes Auburn, includes Shoreline, includes Highline. In total, 30 districts would be impacted. For our district, that works out to, if you take 112 divided by 118, that's a 5% reduction in state funding that comprises approximately 2/3 of the funds we get. That's $2 million, $2 to $2.5 million a year less that we would get. Across the region, it would shift approximately $250 million out of the region. I think it is something that is material. We know that school districts run on very thin margins. When we're looking to restore fund balance and what it'll take to get back up to 8 to 10%, that's a multi-year endeavor. So when we're talking about a 3% reduction overall in funding, that's significant. And I think very quickly, before the legislative session even begins, there needs to be a strong message from those in the region that this is a non-starter, that districts can't afford to lose a quarter of a billion dollars to go elsewhere. And one of the things that I hope people focus on is there are many different issues that are in play right now when it comes to school finance. There is, what's the appropriate inflation factor? There's questions over whether we need to fund certain areas of education to a greater extent. There's the regionalization factor. These are all distinct issues. When you're talking about the appropriate inflation adjustment, that has nothing to do with regionalization, that has nothing to do with particular areas that may be underfunded. And so I think each one needs to be discussed and considered discreetly. And when it comes to regionalization, I believe common sense says that an 18% differential is not great. That, and that doesn't even take into account that districts, that many districts that receive a higher regionalization rate also receive less in federal funds because they're not Title III like us, which is the reason, in part, that we receive less than the median state spending per student. So I think it's something that we need to get behind quickly as a region. I believe I've done sort of my own, you know, rough calculations. You know, the board as a whole, you know, requested, I think it would be good to just, you know, unless it's a complicated calculation, to, for Matt and the administration to just plug in what we would receive under, you know, in the current academic year with a 1.12 regionalization factor rather than a 1.18. And I would encourage every other district that would be impacted to do the same calculation because it's material and it's larger than what even the ask is for certain other things like special education. So if we want to get money into the school in order to pay for, for all programs, the best and easiest way to focus is on regionalization. While we're having parallel conversations about other issues that hit the budget, but in my view, it's a simple explanation. It's whether or not politicians will allow $250 million or a quarter of a billion dollars to leave this region because they're divorced from economic reality.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for that analysis. I think, I think very clearly what this is trying to do is fund some unfunded mandates and create a new unfunded mandate that used to be funded. So we are, we are moving things, moving, moving coconuts around right now. And it's a, it's a real, real problem for us. And I think from an equity perspective, this is amongst our highest cost of living areas in the United States. And to be moving this money out has direct impact on salaries or staff levels and ability to retain and attract teachers who can then live in this area. So the question, I think, in front of the board would be, if we would like, Dan has done back-of-the-envelope calculations. The question in front of the board would be to have Matt look at what this would mean to us. We just got done learning about our monthly budget. We just got done learning about our monthly budget. What would, what would that monthly budget look like, or even yearly budget look like, if, you know, we lost 5% of our funds? And what would the implication be to start? And then I think this would also feed into potentially our legislative discussions. And hopefully, we can bring this to visibility with more like-minded districts. I think there's a challenge between school board directors who may not necessarily be looking at this level of detail. It's very easy to overlook. And superintendents and CFOs who understand it, but may have a hard time, you know, recognizing, explaining it to school board members in the same way that maybe our perspective might. So.
And explaining, most of our state legislators don't understand it. I mean, we were sitting in our meeting yesterday, and I think I overheard you were talking at the other, this table's right next to mine. You know, someone, someone making the comment, but Mercer Island has so much money. And there's such, and this is from King County, this was our region, such a lack of understanding of school finances. And our legislators don't understand the school finances. And, and to the point where they're like, well, we've done that, we dealt with it all. So we don't want to deal with it again. I mean, I think it's, I think we have to find a way to educate the community. You know, I mean, I'm sitting in, you know, stadiums with, with other parents, and they're like, why is our stadium so crappy? And I'm like, because we don't get any money from the state for athletics. And, you know, we've got school buildings falling down, and those are going to come first before our sports facilities. And why, you know, why does Bellevue and Issaquah have such great facilities? It's like corporate tax structure. So, I mean, there's such a lack of understanding of where the money comes from, where it can go to. And then this, you know, I mean, you know, I don't even know what the number is these days. 30% of your income should go to rent or mortgage. And, I mean, most Mercer Islanders are so far beyond that by choice. But, you know, it doesn't, anyways, the, we have to get to, I mean, equity is equity. Equity is not just for, you know, equity is for everyone. And I think that we have to find a way where we can communicate that and make it in a way that not only does the public understand it, but our state legislators understand it too.
So, thank you so much for that, Dan. Doing such a lot of that background work to give us a really good understanding of this. Because when I originally read this, I'm like, the first page, does it make sense with the second page? Right? I'm like, I love the first page, what they're trying to do. And I'm like, what are they doing? How is the second page meeting your first page goal? And that's helpful. And so also, I think it's helpful for people to recognize that it's still one pot of money, that they're not adding any investment, but they're shuffling money around, right, and trying to use. And really, my work for the last 25 years is in equity. And, and it's always interesting when people talk about equity as artificially lowering, right, and moving things around versus like, really, how does a state specifically invest, right, in these areas? Because actually, what they're doing is not having any larger system changes, right? Instead of like, really putting more money into this district and letting, you know, keeping everything the same, right? Allowing the system to operate, but really focusing on areas that need. And then, but then the whole kind of, from the county perspective, right? It really, within the county, there is such also socioeconomic diversity within King County. And then we might all be impacted by that 12%, but like you said, with the addition of not getting other funding, it is like double, it's like compounded in kind of the impact. And so how do we, I want to get rid of the word equity because they're not using the equity lens. And so I think that's a starting place in that they are misusing equity. It is.
So challenge them on it.
Says to challenge on it, because this is actually from a person who came from a communist country. This is actually communist. And like, it's redistribution of a certain pot. You know, equity is a very different, it's like rising everybody up instead of artificially. And so I think we should challenge that as first as a baseline because they're using that. And when people hear the equity word, then it makes it hard for them to even be able to speak the truth because they don't want to seem like anti-equity, you know? And so who wants to be that? That's going to be. So I think we should first challenge, and just kind of like, your message seems very inconsistent.
Yeah, that's the, the other thing is, it's sort of, it's couched, and the headline is for teacher retention.
Yes.
So there's no data to substantiate that it'll accomplish that. I actually, looking at OSPI data, I was like, okay, well, teacher experience, that's a pretty decent proxy for teacher retention. So what does teacher experience rates look like across the state? If you look at those 29 or 30 districts that have a regionalization factor above 1.12, it's actually nominally less than the state average, and teacher experience is nominally more than those that have a lower regionalization factor. And then if you look within the county, that, for those districts that are in the same band but have the highest cost of living, Mercer Island, Issaquah, Lake Washington, you see, I think perhaps unsurprisingly, that teacher experience is a little bit less because it's harder for those, for our districts to retain teachers. So it's, I think it's being used and weaponized, equity, to redistribute funds because it's the first time post-McLeary that it's up for discussion. I think there is an attempt to see if it'll pass and if King County and school districts will roll and frankly be suckers and just, you know, swallow the argument without any sort of proof that it accomplishes what it says it will. And I guess the other thing is in terms of the overall increase, it's, it doesn't even cover inflation, or maybe it barely does. It's going to be $3 billion over two years. I think on a, the state on a yearly basis is right around, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but like 15 to 16 million. So over a two-year period, you're roughly looking at it maybe like inflation. But there, there is no increase under this proposal. It's going to, it's about redistribution, redistribution in a way that doesn't make sense. And we're already seeing that districts like ourselves, it's hard to fill bus driver positions. It's hard to balance a budget and give staff a real, you know, cost of living wage when we get the same amounts or, you know, just nominally a little bit more than districts in much lower cost of living areas. Unfortunately, you know, I think there was this idea that it was too explosive for it to be touched and that, and that the status quo would remain, which frankly, I was a little bit unhappy with because I think already, we're not receiving enough money as it is. But now that it's on the table, I think it needs to be quickly quashed and, and the message to be sent that those districts that are in one, you know, should be thankful that that's where they're at and that we're not asking for, you know, 1.3, 1.4, Palo Alto, 1.62%. At least preserve the status quo. This was fought over four years ago. I, I don't think that the metropolitan areas have become any cheaper in the intervening four years.
So who supports this? Like, if it can, if, right, or is there a group that advocate for it? Because that's kind of important to know.
So they, there was, as Director Glowitz mentioned, there was a work group that OSBI had convened. And even some of their recommendations are not upheld in what ultimately Superintendent Rockdahl put forward. So I haven't heard of any groups getting behind this yet. It's still a week old. It is one of five or six kind of core proposals that he's put out from his office since August. And so this is the one we've all been waiting on because it's the one that has the most significant impact for us. So I haven't heard anyone getting behind it. I have asked our superintendent of, down at the ESD, John Welch, to put it on the superintendent agenda for Wednesday. So that'll be my first chance to really talk to colleagues. It's going to be on Wednesday. However, we did bring this up to a certain extent with our CCS group. Again, Tohoma, Riverview, Issaquah, Snokeville, and Mercer Island. And so I'm starting to outreach to those superintendents because we all are in that kind of same place. So I think we can use our CCS group. I'm convening a couple of the EA presidents, as well as three of the superintendents from that group, to look at our bylaws and start to set some priorities for what we want to do for the year, which could include political action. We will also be working with our school alliance, Lake Stevens, Everett, what's that? We're all working on that. Lake Stevens, Everett, Tohoma, Lake Washington, Mercer Island. I feel like I'm missing one.
Is Kent in there?
Everett.
Kent's not in there. Everett, yeah, Everett, yeah, Everett is. So that group, which is headed up with KNL Gates, with Grace Wong, we'll be pulling together that group. So we're going to be trying to mobilize. I know there's, and it was talked about last night, you know, there's a lot of momentum between all of what, you know, they call the alphabet soup, all the WASDs and WASDs and everything else, around special education funding. To Director Glowitz's point, while really important, that shouldn't be conflated with this one because we spent $2 million out of the EPNO levy for special education.
Upwards of $3.
Upwards of $3 million. So if we spent $3 million, and let's say we recoup that, but now we've lost $2.5 million on this, we haven't made any ground. And so I think we really need to separate these. And, and while I know that everyone has gotten behind special education, and we should, that should be funded. We can't lose out of this one too because it, we won't go anywhere.
So what we'd like next steps to be is for the board to request Matt to give us an example of what this would mean to Mercer Island. I think two board members could probably write a one or two-page letter that talks about this, that then be approved by the board and shared amongst our constituency and other school boards. And then, again, with the legislators, when we have a legislative meeting in December. But I think we have to move very quickly on this before it gets too much traction.
I'm happy to begin drafting a letter and to work with anyone else who's interested.
Maggie Tyne, do you have anything to add?
No, I agree with that approach. I'm not volunteering to co-write the letter, though. Who would like? Not me.
I'm happy to help with the letter.
That's great. Thank you both.
I mean, I really, thank you. And I, I, to me, this is all educating our community. I mean, I like what Rockdahl has to say about the staff bonuses. So, I mean, and making sure that each issue was separate. Because, I mean, we have to keep WWE, that's what blew up last year's. So, you know, it's all got to be addressed. So, I mean, together, but separately.
Don't move our problems around. Let's really actually solve.
Well, and then maybe look at revenue streams for the state. But, you know, no one wants to say those bad words together.
They don't want to commit to more money, so they're just moving things around. They don't do their job.
Right. Well, it's. The state doesn't bring in enough revenue for what we want to do. So there's either cut your expenses or bring more.
Any thoughts?
From what I've learned, shows a lot. From what I've learned is I need to learn more about school funding. And I think it's an important issue, is Director Lurie said. You know, why is our stadium old compared to other stadiums? That's something that students can get behind. And I think this funding directly affects the students. And this should be a conversation that students in our district and students in the District Two, regional students, should be, should be brought up about it. And I think there's more power behind it if there is some sort of student cohort that's willing to be a part of maybe even the letter and continuing, possibly even going to the, the OSPI's office saying that students are actually not for this because that, that could, if, if the numbers say that we're going to lose less money, we're going to lose less money, I'm sure students are not for less money in their schools and in their education.
And it's, it's telling how many, how few of our, at least high school students, I think, are growing up and saying, I want to be a teacher. And in large part, it's because it's a quality of living. They know that they can't earn enough money to live comfortably on, where that didn't used to be the case necessarily. And so, you know, if, if we had students coming in and saying, you know, this could be my passion, but I also have to be able to support a family. I mean, you don't, you shouldn't have to choose. And that's, that's attraction and retention of staff.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not getting students who are interested in teaching.
Anything to add, Fred?
I will just say, Director Solven and I meet every Friday morning. This will be on our agenda to figure out a timeline, and then I'll communicate back to you on that. We'll let all the board get the information, but get it as quickly as possible to Director Glowitz and Director Susan.
Thank you very much. And I think that concludes 2D. Let us move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And with that, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And against, so that passes 6-0. And superintendent announcements, 5A.
No real announcements, other than Lakewood really appreciated your visit. They, they had a great time showcasing their school. And so thank you for coming down and being part of, part of that. I know it's on Thursday, so we got to find some dates that are going to work for you, Director Din, but we have two more to go. So that's it.
And led report.
I think we covered it, but.
Fair enough. Any board member announcements, inquiries, or reports? I'll start with Maggie Tyne.
I don't, I don't really have anything. We all went on the visit. It was lovely. Really enjoyed seeing some of what was happening at Lakewood, especially the, the classroom that had the, the technology rotations where kids got to pick and they were doing things like, you know, building Lego challenge, like drawing, planning, and building Lego challenges, and doing engineering challenges, and doing code.org. And that was, that was a fun, energy-filled classroom to visit. So, yeah, nice to see.
Dan?
Um, I will, I went to events on Saturday, but I will let Tam report on the API event, which was a lot of fun.
Yeah, we had Voices Heard. It was an Asian-American Pacific Island event organized by, spearheaded by Sophie Chang Yang and, you know, so many community members, parents, Asian-American Pacific Islander parents on Mercer Island. And it was over 250 people there. And really, the idea was to, one, I think the idea was to welcome Fred as our new superintendent. And also to recognize the increasing number of Asian parents on the island. So sometimes, you know, we go in the community, we see each other, right, you know? But there's never been an intentional event where parents came together and kind of see each other. And that's really powerful. And it was a lot of fun. I haven't gone to, and, so, you know, when you're young, and then there's about a 10, 15 period years of your friends getting married. And then we go to, we would do these big banquets where we have these Chinese dinners, like 10, 15 courses dinner. And, you know, now I'm older, I don't get to go to those things anymore, right? The coolest thing we got to is our mitzvahs with myself. That's the biggest party, like, you know, in our family. But then, you know, it was, it reminded me of a wedding of, with all these amazing food. There was this banquet tables and we had a drive-in dance. We had a representative from the South Asian community who lit the candle, you know, just to, there was just so many special moments. And so, but I'll let Fred too, kind of, talk about, how did you feel? Because from a person who's not used to maybe walking to that kind of space, what was it like?
I, it was absolutely a special night, I think, for our community to bring together families who. I think for our community to bring together families who moved here during COVID and really haven't even gotten a chance to get to know their community as much and, and other families who maybe haven't seen each other, you could just feel the energy throughout the night. Dana and I had an absolute blast. She is from a Mexican family. And so when I first moved down to California near her family, you know, the family gatherings were very overwhelming for me at first. I, I learned to love those much more, but, you know, it was very much that celebration of, of humanity, being together, and I, I felt really honored. Director Din took me around all the tables as if it was a bit of like a wedding thing to be able to toast all. Got to meet everyone. No, I felt, we felt so warm and welcomed at that event. And just thank you to Sophie and all of the, the people who planned it. You know, it's easy for me to say, let's do it every year because I didn't do all the hard work. I just got to show up and have fun, but gosh, what a great night. So thank you, Director Din, and for, for bringing me around there. And I know Director Tucker, you were there and looked like you were having a good time as well.
Yes, Director Gouetz was there.
Well, Director Gouetz, I mean, we were, we were moving, we were sitting back at times just kind of watching, just trying to figure it all out.
And it's really nice. I mean, I think the community really appreciated, you know, Fred being so open and engaging with the community. I think that's the first step. And being able to say belonging to fill this agency, to now they know Fred, they will have the agency to say, hey, you know, I have a problem. Or hey, you know, how can I help with funding, right? Good, you know, and kind of to just be part of the community. So I think that was really important. And so, and, you know, I was telling someone about it and, you know, they always make fun of me that we're, you know, Mercer Island's so special. I go, yeah, we are because how many, how, you know, how many districts did this kind of party for their superintendent? So, you know, I, I, yeah, I'm glad that you enjoyed it.
Set us high bar for the situation. I think, I wasn't able to make it. I had, I had a conflict. But, but I think that, I don't know. I mean, the Seattle freeze, I think impacts, you know, each of us differently. And I think that people try so hard to be, I don't know, politically correct isn't the right word, but, you know, we, we find comfort in like-minded and value, and, and shared values. And, you know, it's okay to, you know, go to your culture and go to what you're comfortable with and, and find meaning in that and then share it as well. But, but, but I think that's great. So I just, what have I done? Yeah, the DA2 meeting yesterday where we talked about mostly special education funding and really working on that. And then All Island Band Night was last Friday night. And it was super fun. And I always, I mean, it's just a highlight. You know, I mean, I think at all these community events this year, you know, as things are frankly back to normal, despite pouring rain, which thank goodness, because otherwise it wouldn't have happened. But just, just people are just happy to be there and happy to belong. And, and the kids were, you know, the kids couldn't care less if it's pouring rain. So anyways, it was just a great event, a great way for the community to come together. And nice to see all the administrators from all the schools there supporting their students. It was great.
And I, I, I wouldn't have any else to add. I think there's lots of exciting things have been happening.
I'll just add in the foundation had two great calling nights. I haven't heard totals on it, but I know we had student callers who were doing an amazing job. And the calls I was making, I, people were picking up the phone more than they have in recent years. Yeah, right, exactly. Now, when I call and I say this, I always have to say, there's no emergency. But no, talked to some families with kindergartners and first-time families. So really great opportunity to make some calls, but thanks to the foundation, we'll get numbers from them. But everyone who's already donated or supported, thank you so much.
Very exciting. And with, and actually representative of Mercer Island, it's a special community. But with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I see 6-0 for that. And with that, we are adjourned at 7:55.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Roger, Dan.
I know, right?